Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Board of County Commissioners of Rio Blanco County Meeting, October 28th. We are calling it to order at 1:05. This meeting will be streamed live on the RBC YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in this meeting and are unable to travel to Rangeley, we are having a virtual link set up at Meeker at the Historic Courthouse located at 555 Main Street, third floor hearing room in Meeker, Colorado. So get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. What's behind the thing?
I can't see it.
Okay, you see it?
I can't.
I can barely see a little bit of it. Thank you, Chrissy.
The hole in the ceiling. Starting to remodel.
I was just gonna say now we have to remodel.
I'll at least replace a few of the panels.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's someone's name that needs... Is that you sent in or no?
Are you here for what you need? I... He was just...
What's that? He's trying to get his traffic going.
Oh, yeah, he has to come around back here.
I wonder if there's anyone back there.
Uh, Joey or...
Joey, everyone, the guy should be back there.
Yeah.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you for knowing that, Jennifer. Oh!
I can do it here.
Public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you are requested to limit your comments to three minutes per member or five minutes per group. Public comment time is not for questions and answers. It is your time to express your views. To ensure there's adequate public comment time, please provide your name and address prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant at 970-878-9683. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name and address for the record. So there being none in the room. I am gonna... There aren't any online either. Any online. Seeing none. We will move to, this is a tentative agenda which includes all information available as of October 24th, 2025. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the RBC Historic Courthouse, 555 Main Street, Meeker, Colorado, and at the Rangeley Town Hall, 209 East Main Street, Rangeley. I would entertain a motion for line item D.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of the agenda of the October 28th, 25th agenda, including two changes. First one being, we would add is item P, which is ratification of the final draft of the EWP application, which is emergency watershed program. The second one being item Q, considering a contract for elevated excavating for the purpose of subgrading and dirt work for the Meeker Airport Fuel Farm, and that contract being subject to legal review. Nope, don't need that part, never mind. No, that's right.
Yeah.
They don't have to have the legal review.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Christie, can you please call the roll?
Richfield?
Yes.
Overton?
Hi.
Oh, Herron.
Hi. Motion passes. Moving on to consent. Line item A.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the below-listed items of the consent agenda. Consider as to the October 24th, 2025 payroll management reports. Meeting minutes from October 14th, 2025.
Oh, second.
I have a first and a second. Can you please call the roll?
Richfield? Is this pertaining to this?
It is.
Before we have a...
Yeah, I received a message earlier today that the meeting minutes, that they have been having a bunch of issues at the clerk and recorder's, therefore the meeting minutes were not done. So we will need to actually move those to next meeting agenda.
So the minutes from October 14th are not...
They are.
I was seeing them.
Yeah.
Didn't see them. Okay.
Okay, so I would like to modify my motion to start over. Madam Chairman, I would like to move to approve the consent agenda, which is the October 24th, 2025 payroll management reports.
I will second, but are we, we already have a motion on the floor.
Well, did you second it?
I did.
Okay.
So...
We could vote on it. Let's vote on it and we can vote on it.
Or you can just pre...
A friendly amendment. I'm good with that being a friendly amendment. Friendly amendment by striking minutes.
Okay. So we'll move.
Oh, Herron. Hi.
Scritchfield?
Hi.
Overton?
All right.
And are you okay with that? Do you need help with what I'll be just...
I think I'm...
You got it?
Okay.
All right. Motion passes. Moving on to line item three, business. Line item A.
So, Madam Chair, I would move to approve submittal of White River Electric Association letter agreement for the three-phase power expansion at the Meeker Airport for the new fuel farm.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. We need any discussion on this one?
It's what Eric told us this morning. They're just putting three phases into the fuel farm. Save us some money.
Yeah. Good deal. Yeah.
Overton?
Hi.
Oh, Herron?
Hi.
Richfield?
Hi.
Uh, moving on, motion passes, moving on to line item B.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Colorado Department of Revenue for control of confidential data concerning sales and use tax for Rio Blanco County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. These are just updated MOUs that we do on a yearly basis. Will you please call the roll?
Oh, Herron?
Hi.
Scritchfield?
Hi.
Overton?
Hi.
Uh, motion passes, line item C.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Revenue for control of confidential data concerning sales and tax for the town of Meeker.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
Richfield?
Hi.
Overton?
Hi.
Oh, Herron?
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to line item D.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Colorado Department of Revenue for the control of confidential data concerning sales and use tax for the town of Rangeley.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
Overton?
Hi.
Oh, Herron?
Hi.
Scritchfield?
Hi.
Motion passes, moving on to line item E.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of memorandum of understanding the Colorado Department of Revenue for control of confidential data concerning sales and use tax for Rio Blanco County lodging tax. Rangeley.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
Oh, Herron?
Hi.
Richfield?
Hi.
Overton?
Hi.
Motion passes, moving on to line item F.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Colorado Department of Revenue for the control of confidential data concerning sale and use tax for Rio Blanco County lodging tax in Meeker.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
Richfield?
Hi.
Overton?
Hi.
Oh, Herron?
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to line item G.
Madam Chair, I would move ratification of a letter of support for the White River and Douglas Creek Conservation District's community partnership grant proposal, receiving grant funds from the Colorado River District to assist in funding three exigent emergency watershed protection projects for private landowners.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is Reese on to go over this, or do you want...
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I, I really have nothing to add, only if the commissioners or anyone in the room have any questions. Appreciate you guys approving this for the districts and pursuing this grant funding. I'm glad that we can get some of these projects moving for these folks that are really struggling with the flooding.
Reese, do you know, so these are the projects that in RCS's EWP is paying 75%. Do you know what percentage River District is looking at paying?
I would have to double check with Vanessa. If I remember correctly, I, I can't remember if it's the full 25% or if it was 12. I can check on that and find out.
Well, and I guess, yeah, to, to fill in that other piece, I thought I heard her say the state had, I don't think she's got it in writing, but there, she had verbal approval that the state was gonna come with the 12 and a half percent. So I'm assuming the River District is the other 12 and a half.
That sounds correct. Let me get an update on that and make sure I keep you guys up to date on those movements. As you know, it's been a bit of a challenge getting some certainty on that other 25%, but the districts and Vanessa particularly are working really hard on it.
So while you're verifying that, would you double check what they did with their deadlines? Cause I know the 24th was the initial deadline. I'm assuming that was extended, but if you would just check on that while you're at that, thank you.
I will also check on that, cause I know that was in conversation as well.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Reese. Will you please call the roll?
Overton?
Hi.
Oh, Herron?
Hi.
Scritchfield?
Hi.
Motion passes, moving on to line item H.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve a letter of support for the Colorado Ag Water Alliance, CW, CAWA, application for Colorado River District funds for the South Side Island Ditch Diversion Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. On Reese, you're gonna take on?
Yeah, and, and Kelly will probably have more to add on this. So this came through when I was out of the office and then I crafted the letter. But what I can say is this is right... Is this is right on the money with policy in the L N R P. Supporting, um, the maintenance and work on irrigation infrastructure for our landowners. Um, it's also tied to the health of our watersheds, and I just think as we've seen with all this flooding. Um, whose ditches have been very helpful. In collecting sediment and other things. So I think any work that we can support on irrigation infrastructure. And the good work that Kawa is doing is really important. So I thank you all for approving this letter as well.
So I think, and Doug, you had seen that request also from, let's see, was it? Kelly or Bailey, who was, um? Anyway. I believe this is a project that is, um. I know Liz was very, was aware of it from the. Integrated Water Initiative. And I believe they're one that the. That effort through the conservation districts had had diversion assessments done. And this is a piece. Kind of a follow-up to that. So some more ongoing work with the. Integrated Water Initiative and. Kawa is that organization that, um, Greg. Oh, Peterson.
Peterson.
Um, yeah, is very involved in, and he goes through, he, he's been very helpful to our ag producers, so certainly supportive.
Anything else? Will you please call the roll?
O'Hara.
Hi.
Scritchfield.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Motion passes, moving on to line item I.
Madam Chair, I would approve, move to approve a letter to the U S Department of Interior. Bureau of Land Management supporting the rescission of the twenty twenty-four public lands rule.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. And back to you, Reese.
Yeah, so this is a big one. Um, this rule came about during the Biden administration. You hear the term a lot, conservation leasing, and though that, that doesn't seem problematic. The issue with this public lands rule is that it would actually prioritize restoration and conservation projects on our public lands. Um, and, and void or take a priority over other multiple uses like livestock grazing, oil and gas development, so on and so forth. Uh, the, the premise of our public lands, as you all know, is multiple use, and it is possible to prioritize all of these things. Whether it be restoration, conservation, grazing, oil and gas development, all at the same time. So. The current administration and the D O I in particular is looking to rescind this rule and take us back to the original purpose and use of our public lands. And, um, I appreciate you all looking at this letter, because I, I, I think it's essential. For a county like Rio Blanco to submit comments that we support the rescission of a rule like this and, and get back to. The original use and intent of our lands. Um, Flipmo was used. To craft this rule in the Biden administration, but in, in my mind, whether you're looking at our L N R P. Flipma itself, or the mission of B L M, this rule actually contradicts in my mind. Um, the use of our public land. So, um, would be happy to answer any other questions.
Reese, wasn't this a part of the thirty by thirty plan, basically? If this was part of implementing that?
Yeah, I can't speak specifically, but yes, it is related. It is absolutely related to the thirty by thirty plan. Um, in my mind and in many other groups. Um, in advocacy organization, in ag organizations minds, they are absolutely tied together.
And if you may recall, thirty by thirty was thirty percent of the land and water. Would be protected by twenty thirty.
Which is an important point, because in our plan and policies for natural resources, it, it's. The thirty by thirty pan- plan is specifically referenced that, that we oppose any effort to advance that. Um, so this, this couldn't be more clear, a letter and comments that. Follow our L N R P to a, to a T.
Is, do you, do you guys think that this could potentially be a conversation with? Um, Congressman Hurd to maybe run a bill to. Keep this implemented the way that we want it implemented, so that. It would take an act of Congress to change it, if we got another flipped administration, I'm.
Yeah, so we don't keep going back and forth. And, and I think, Reese, I think that, that's a good question. Um, we probably need to visit with Farm Bureau and Public Lands Council to see their thoughts on that. Um. Part of the deal with this rule was we really felt they were. It wasn't legal, because it went. Contrary to step. To laws. So I, I don't know how you strengthen a law that's already, but I think it's worth a good conversation.
Okay.
So.
I would.
Any visit with that?
Yeah, I, I think that would be a great conversation to ma- maybe start, or a joint conversation between some wards. And the Congressman's Office. Um, I would add to this, this extends to state issues. I, I think we, we may very likely see something like this come out of our state land board. In the near future, um, conservation leasing isn't new. So I, I think we should definitely be plugged in and watching this on multiple fronts, whether it's the federal or state levels.
Good thought. Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Richfield.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
O'Hara.
Hi.
Motion passes. Um, moving on to, thank you, Reese.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on to line item J.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve a contract amendment number one to the C D P H E contract number twenty twenty-five. Sixteen twenty-seven. With Rio Blanco County Department of Public Health and Environment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um. Just really quickly making sure that it, so this is for public health. And it's their normal core. Contracts that they do. Their yearly contracts. For funding. And it looks like there's an amendment on one of them. For a hundred and ninety-five. Thousand, five hundred dollars, so. Anything else?
Overton.
Hi.
O'Hara.
Hi.
Scritchfield.
Hi.
Uh, motion passes, moving on to line item K.
Oh, Madam Chair, I would move to, um. Prove the third variance to the A E C. County Road, County Road seventy-seven Bridge, modifying the reinforcing bars. To stainless steel. And before you second that. Do we need to wait till this? Till the meeting with. Is this separate?
Separate.
Okay. So now you can second it then, thank you.
I will second that.
One motion.
I tell you what you can.
Do you wanna go in on this one?
Well, they put, uh, rebar in concrete. And they, in this particular engineering, they want to increase it to stainless steel so that it doesn't rust. Out there in the. With the, uh, in case they decide to put. The, um. Stuff they put on the roads for, for dust.
Oh, yeah, the.
Mank chloride could rust the regular. Rebar, so they're putting stainless steel in so it doesn't rust last longer.
Wonder how much that added cost? I guess they're covered, it's okay. All right.
Good thing about that.
Will you please call the roll?
O'Hara.
Hi.
Scritchfield.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
All right, so. The next one, we're first gonna have a discussion with a potential motion. Um, on an exemption to hiring fees for the Department of Human Services. For a child welfare caseworker.
Oh, I think we probably have Carmen, is Carmen on?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, um, I would like to propose to open, um. The caseworker position. Um, right now currently, I can go over how many cases we have, which I think that's really important. Is that our supervisor currently has one foster youth in transition and. Two children in need of protection cases for sub adopt. And two prevention cases. And then we have our A P S worker. Who has two active A P S cases and one pending A P S case. And she also is a certified foster home, um. Worker as well. And so, and she still assists, you know, in case aid duties. She tries to help out the caseworkers. And then we have, um. You know, of course, our case aide who helps with visitations, so she's transporting kiddos and. Um, marching the visitations as well, supervising visitations. And then we have a case. Um, our first caseworker has four current case child welfare investigations, they're open. One child welfare case, one prevention case. Our other caseworker currently has four. Current child welfare investigations open and three child welfare cases. Um, and we also have, of course, our Ms. Leanne that does C M P, she's our facilitator, and she has one active C M P and three. Upcoming families. Um, and she is continuing to get, um, referrals. And since January, when we had everybody, um. Our team has been doing awesome, they successfully closed, I think it's around five cases. Um, and that's on top of our head right now. So if we were able to. Have another caseworker position, it would help take the load off of some of our workers. And, um, we can continue to successfully close cases as we need to. Does that, did I go too fast?
No.
Okay, and then we also, because, um, we have so many cases, um, we have went over. Our, um, overtime. Because we're having to do so many different things with all of our families. Um, we were budgeted for three thousand for the year, and we've used five thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-four cents.
Carmen, did you send us a document in writing of the?
Job description?
Yeah, well, the job description, but the reasons for it, I mean, I, I hear, I hear what you just said, but. I was thinking we usually had those in writing, and I'm just not finding it.
No, I did not. And I can type that up if I need to. It just, it wasn't a new position, so I didn't think I had to write it up, so that's my fault, because it was ongoing, it's just a frozen position right now.
That was gonna be my question, is the, are you asking for a new one, or is?
No. This one, right now. I mean, we may have some changes in our department, also with a case, um, worker, so I don't wanna, you know. I don't know if I should go into that right now too, or?
So I was, yeah, I had, I had heard rumblings. That, that you guys might have a. A resignation, so, and that, and is that a caseworker position?
It, it is.
Okay.
So I would need two caseworker positions. So the one that is currently frozen and the, and possible upcoming one.
So, so you're really not down anybody right now?
We are, we technically had the other caseworker position open, we just haven't been able to get that filled. So yes, we are down one. And possibly two in the next little bit.
So if I'm not mistaken, we do not have it budgeted for next year either.
That's not correct. We did have it budgeted because this was in our budget cur- you know, I don't know what's happened in the last couple months since we talked, but. Since before it was frozen, it was budgeted.
I thought we pulled all of those open positions off for next year.
That is a lower question, that is a good question.
I, I thought we pulled all of those from the.
I.
Budget.
Yeah, I. I don't know, I thought we were good, I can. Talk to her. Again, I thought we were, you know, it was kind of still there. But I can talk to her to verify for sure. I wasn't sure what had happened with our, my frozen position.
I guess what, I'm leaning towards, and I'm open to you guys' thought processes, but I'm leaning towards if you would give us a written. Um, justification, and if that is in next. Year's budget, because I sure thought we pulled. All of those open positions out of our budget, that's how we got. Our budget down some. I could be wrong.
Looking at her this.
And how many caseworkers do you have?
Currently, we have two, and, um. Um, Kelsey has a caseload, which is, she's the supervisor. And I trying to help on with on-call.
Okay.
We do have an A P S worker too, so I don't know if that's what you, but she does the adopt protection. That's her main.
Yeah.
Duties.
And let me ask you this, so. Because I don't totally understand that your world there. And if. Well, the changes that are coming down from the federal level. We keep hearing might have increased administration. So would this position be helping with that at all?
Um, what do you mean? I guess, there's so many things happening right now. Do you mean just solely like in the child welfare world, how? They're going to decrease admin, or?
So she's asking more around SNAP and Medicaid?
Okay, yeah, that's totally.
This person does not, okay.
Yeah.
And so. So just looking, like your little crystal ball. Um. Do we think we would need to add people? There because of that in the next year?
Um, I'm not necessarily because of that, but. For any reason, what, do you see the caseloads increasing next year for any reason?
I, I do.
If you give us those reasons.
For SNAP and Medicaid or child welfare? Cause I, that's some stuff I was gonna cover during my meeting also. But for child welfare, that's it, you know, it's up and down. It just depends on what's happening and, you know, with the different changes and, you know. Um, the different monies, you know, like for SNAP and Medicaid, I don't, it's hard saying. But it's always changing, it can go up, and then we can have it steady, and then it just, yeah. Child, our child welfare wor- world is very unpredictable.
So Kelly, in, in your request, do you? Want to hold off until we get written? Stuff and if, and if we do that. Um. Carmen, is that, uh, just? Well, it would be, um, it would be more than two weeks, because.
Yeah.
More than it would be the tenth.
Mm-hmm.
So that is. Two weeks, yeah. And if, in, in that two weeks, you think you would know about that other position by now?
Yes. That, yeah.
So you'd be coming back to us then anyway?
Yeah.
I, and I guess the other thing, and maybe a bigger issue. For me, is what if we've got this in the twenty-sixth budget or not? Because if not, we're now playing with next year's budget.
So, currently listed. And so help me know who, who's in what position here.
Okay.
Caseworker supervisor, so we just have titles, we don't have names attached, so just tell me. The names of the people so that I can wrap my head around, is. Is there this extra position already on the books? So that's all I'm doing right now. So casework supervisors, Kels.
Correct.
Who is caseworker one?
Caseworker one might be Zoe.
Okay. And then family engagement facilitator?
That's Leanne.
Uh, and no, I don't need to know that. Social caseworker one?
Um, I believe that is Adriana.
Okay, and then social caseworker foster care.
That's Natalie.
So then we, you don't have an extra one on the books here.
Okay.
And then you have one case aide.
Yes, and that's Mika.
Okay.
So I can get with, who do I need to get with? Cause I did send out an email, but maybe I sent it to the wrong people.
Uh, for what?
Um, just to make sure, like, cause I was told that it would possibly be there, um. But I just want to, you know, if it's gone, like the money is truly gone, do I just get with Laura or the finance?
So you would have to get with Laura because she has it listed under vacancies and from our recollection is we took all the vacancies off the books.
Okay.
So you would have to get with her because it's not in the main budget, in her budget, meaning Laura's. It's down below with vacancies under social caseworker three.
Social caseworker three, okay.
And if it is gone from there, then we have to reconsider that in the whole budget concept.
Okay.
So find that out before you send um the email to the three of us, the information that Kelly requested.
Okay.
And maybe I'm off it. Were we not, I, I think any of the other requests, we've seen them in writing, so I assumed we were asking for that. But maybe I'm off. And if that's the case, I don't want her to have to jump through that hoop, but.
Well, we need to figure out, we could approve it and if there's no money there, we're in trouble anyway, so.
Yeah.
So let's do them both. Let's get it in writing and let's get, check and see if we got money somewhere.
Okay.
So do you want to go over, so the next one was for the child support technician. You wanna, th- this one would be a new position. So do you, last time you talked a little bit about it, um with us, with the Board of Social Services last time, um due to Garfield County's contract with us increasing significantly and wondering, you know, cost savings, is it better to have, you know, our own or is, do we keep it with Garfield? So you were gonna go talk with Sharon Longhurst Pritt and the supervisor for that program over in Garfield. Did you have a chance to do that?
Yes, I did. Um, Dawn and I did talk to them um a couple of weeks ago and they are either way. They're fine um with us either leaving it there or not. They are short-staffed in that area. So um if we did decide to take that position and make it here, they can help us right now with any training. We would have to find other training just because they are short-staffed currently in Garfield County.
Does the state provide training?
Um, not a lot of training. It would, she, they would just have to go to a site that does um the training, you know, so they can get it firsthand.
It'd be done online.
So, because usually what we do is um Garfield County will, you know, help assist us with that. So they can kind of do over the shoulder type stuff, but where they're short-staffed, they said they wouldn't be able to. But they weren't, they said they wouldn't be hurt either way, whatever we decide as a county to do with that position.
And one of the questions that we had was if if we decide to take this back over, would they continue to cover our cases for us until we found somebody? Cause this is gonna be a unique position.
Mm-hmm. Um, they were pretty flexible with us, like what we kind of need right now, because we told them that, you know, we're not sure what we're going to do. So I believe so, talking to, you know, her and I can't remember his name, Derek.
Derek, yeah.
Yeah.
Darren, Darren or Darren? Darren, I think Darren.
Dar- Daryl, it was Daryl.
Daryl, okay, we both are wrong.
So it, so actually, we haven't heard or made a decision yet whether you're bringing this back in or not, other than that you've got it on the agenda to approve for it. So I guess that's meaning you want to bring it back in.
I wanted to get your guys' thoughts, because you guys wanted me to take it to them to make sure that they, because they have been pretty good with us and not to break any relationships or anything like that. And so that's why we had the meeting with them, just to see, get their feelers and what they felt um would happen either way. If we took it or if they would be in more hardship if they kept it. And they're good either way. So I, we kind of wanted to get your feelings also and what your thoughts were um with the information that was provided to us from Garfield County.
And a couple of things that Carmen and I had discussed among ourselves and then again with them is you know, how fast can we get a, get an employee up to speed? And then, you know, really what is our pull? Because this has got to be an employee that's kind of a good attention to detail employee. They don't have to have the same qualifications that our caseworkers have to have, but they really going to need to be a pass study and they're gonna need to be able to to pay a lot of attention to detail on, on this and learn quick. And so trying to find the right person to, to, to be the child support technician could be a, a, a process in and of itself. And then we gotta get them trained up.
Tell me how this is going to affect the budget. We have to move it from one category to another and is it gonna cost more or are we gonna get it better?
Well, the, 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 there's a, there's a cost share agreement, uh, uh, that, or one, not agreement, but the, the, the state uh slash feds pay a cost share for child support enforcement. I believe it's a sixty, is it sixty or sixty-six percent? Carmen?
Yes, it is. Sixty-six thirty-three.
Yeah, sixty-six thirty-three. So they'll pay sixty-six uh percent of it. Right now, uh, the, all of our incentives and everything go to Garfield County um, uh, directly. And, and it was, uh, you know, forty thousand bucks and we, we did it for several years at that. Um, and I, I think of the, when the previous technician that we had had probably about the same time you were the director. When they left, uh, I, I imagine they had a hard time filling the spot. And so that's when Garfield County agreed to take it over. Garfield County can't do it for that anymore, so they're gonna have to increase their uh, contract. And I think the he, they want sixty-eight thousand, is that right, Carmen? For, for the, the, the contract, so.
It's seventy, um, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred fifteen and thirty-five cents by um May.
By May. So we're gonna have to pay sixty-six, well, they'll, the, the, uh, uh, the part that's not ours will be sixty-six. We'll pay thirty-three percent of that, that contract. And I don't know how that follows out with the forty thousand we're paying them, because I think that's on top of the incentives, right?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The, the, the forty thousand that we pay them right now is on top of the incentives. So I don't know exactly how it adjusts out, but I imagine it will be a little bit more money, but not like the huge amount uh, uh, that you're thinking of.
Or you're talking seventy-seven plus the forty would be equivalent to what it's costing us right now?
No, the, the incentives, the seventy-seven thousand.
Well, I know, but that would come off of
The forty's gonna increase the seventy-seven.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, and then the, the, so the sixty-six percent then would come off of the hundred and ten instead of the seventy.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but then we'd get the incentives back, so that would kind of offset.
Yeah.
And Laura has it listed under the vacancies. Um, she has it listed for sixty-six nine.
That, yes, that was uh paid up to December.
So, I mean, we would, and that's with benefits and everything across the board has how she has it. Cause it's not a full-time position. It's just a, it's a three-quarter time.
Yeah, it'd probably be about three-quarter time position the way if, if they work it the way I envisioned that they'd work it.
But that's benefits and everything.
That's benefits and everything, yeah. And then we, you know, would also consider uh, uh, the other quarter time, uh, uh, since we got paid benefits and anything to see if that's something that we can use.
Can you get a specialized person that can help out with some of those other cases?
Well, that's what kind of we're, we're, we're hoping, or at least case aide worker do something along those lines that would benefit the, the, uh, DHS, other things.
Did you overlap those two?
So I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say child welfare. My line of thinking, and I don't know where yours is, Carmen, but my line of thinking is more along the lines of what Doug was asking earlier on that administrative piece with SNAP and Medicaid. Since that's increasing that caseload, this person could do some eligibility work potentially. If we, if it, if it happens, we don't know at this point, but if it did.
The child welfare would conflict. They can do the child welfare, but they could do the eligibility. They could do uh, 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 some of the front desk type stuff and things like that.
And I agree, that would be good for eligibility to have that, because there is not gonna be a conflict if eligibility, eligibility is working with child um support. And that's something I kind of brought, we, I talked to with um Sarah a little bit.
Is, is that, so what bothered me about this conversation, are we making a job for this person the other quarter? Or is that something that is needed that will relieve other people?
We don't know yet. So I don't even think we can even answer that question until they, all these new rules are being implemented. So right now, we're, we're just solely talking about the three-quarter time child support person.
And we do know for, for, for the, on the eligibility side though, that the in, the caseload's going to increase because of the response times and stuff that they're talking in the new, in the new rule. So that's the, 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 the the amount of work that each eligibility person's going to have to do per case is going to go up. And that's pretty much given.
So just to make sure that I, what does this child support person do? Go after people for child support?
Well, they, they do, they do a couple of different things. One is they start with establishment. So they do, they'll do establishment of child support. So if you get um, you know, let's say, uh, 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 domestic relations splits up and, you know, they can't afford attorneys, they, they, somebody will apply and they will uh, uh, establish child support. And then the, the, the second part of it's the enforcement. So uh, they, they can, they'll, they'll, you know, look for wage assignments. They, they got some uh, uh, tools that they can use, uh, license, yours, uh, your hunting license, your your driver's license, all of that can be at jeopardy if you're not paying your child support. And the, 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 the extreme end is they can go after a delinquent parent for contempt of court and it, and
Well, then it, too, the salary changes, so, you know.
Oh, yeah, they, they do the adjustments and things like that too. So, and a lot of it isn't, you know, some of it they do informally than, and part of it they do through uh the court systems.
So it's not always contentious, but.
It's not always contentious. Sometimes they get the agreements. They, they try to do it through administrative review first where they can. Um, and if they can't get an agreement, then they kick it over to the attorney and up to court.
So again, I, I got it, the numbers didn't add up for me, what you guys were talking about. So let's talk apples and apples and some apples and oranges. So right now, it's costing us how much to, what's the total cost going to Garfield County? Not, not counting the percentage that the state pays or whatever. What's the total amount that's going to them?
So right now, what we have um for the end of state fiscal year, I'll do two, because we got two different amounts. So for um state fiscal year, it is the seventy-seven, six, fifteen, thirty-five, which goes from July to June. And then he also gave us another amount to pay out until December thirty-first, which would be sixty-eight thousand, five hundred, twelve dollars and fifty-three cents. That's only until December for our um county fiscal year. Does that make sense?
So not a hundred percent. So that's just from July till the end of the year.
For the, yeah, until December first.
So basically, we would double that for next year if we continue as is. Is that accurate? Because that's only six months. So next year, it would have to be for twelve months. So we would be looking at twelve, well, actually, we'd be looking at more than that, a hundred and twenty, or whatever, um, now. Okay, so then, so that's the real number that we're talking about next year.
Yeah, and it, that would be if we paid Garfield County out, correct?
Right, okay. Old lady. So we would be looking at a hundred and thirty-seven, oh, twenty-four for next year, if it was to stay the same it is that right now?
No.
No. We, but, but you, that's would be the total amount, not just the cost share.
Right, total amount. And then we split that, the um, what the state and feds pay besides our part. That's sixty-six plus thirty-three percent is that total?
Right.
Okay. If we bring it in-house, do you think we can do it for less than that?
Depends on how aggressive we get with it, but I, I think we could potentially bring it in-house for less than that. Um, part of what Garfield charges is they not only charge for the, the technician, but they also charge supervisor um, fees as part of that as well.
So when I talked, when I spoke with Laura and we calculated it at just that position at thirty hours to do um the child support at twenty-four fifty an hour, and this is gonna include um budget, um benefits, was seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen thirty-five. We tried to get it to what they're saying we owe.
Seventy-seven, basically seventy-seven, six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where your seventy-seven, six comes from.
Yeah, cause that's the amount, yeah. So we tried to work in the, the amount that Daryl gave us that it would cost us for one of our state fiscal years. And I could put it in a, I think I, I can put it again in a spreadsheet for you.
And do you think we can find somebody to do it for that?
That's what I'm worried about, yeah.
We, we're having difficulty finding people to replace on these skilled positions.
Yeah, I think it's across the state. It's just difficult right now.
So, so what's, so what does that mean? Uh, is Benwood going to stay with it until we can find somebody? And if we can't find anybody, are they gonna stay with it?
Well, for right now, from my understanding in the conversation, that they would, would stick with us. I think they'd like a more permanent type thing that is the, uh, basically say, okay, we'll use you until we, we don't, as long as we don't have another choice. But uh, but they've indicated, now the one thing they did say is if we pull from them, that they're not gonna be able to dedicate any resources to help us train. We'd have to find training somewhere else.
So I'm just thinking outside the box here, what if we say we're gonna do this for a quarter? And then we hire somebody and have them run parallel with them for a quarter or two months or one month or whatever we have that person on, they could learn. I guess that costs us more and more money too. And then yeah. Thinking the, I don't know how that would affect us in the sixty-six percent, we believe, that'd be that counting on the dollars or not. No, they wouldn't pay for.
Well, plus they're pretty much saying they don't have time to deal with this. So that would just be paying them to deal with it and do a training.
Well, and we, you go to other counties too.
Oh, yeah, they're not the only ones.
See what they're doing.
So what do you want to do, Carmen? What's your preference? Dawn, what's yours?
I think right now we ought to stay with, uh, with Garfield County. We got a couple of other things that's going on that um, could potentially affect this as well.
Carmen?
Um I think either ways is good, I'm, you know, open to what we feel that we need to do. I just think, you know, sometimes too that people want to have. A face to talk to here, but Garfield's done an exceptional job.
I I like the idea of having a job in Meeker if we can do that. But.
I guess. And and I'm just thinking my thoughts out, I'm thinking my thoughts out loud, sorry.
In Riverdale County, that's what I meant.
Yeah, and and I really want to hear what Jennifer's thinking too, but. I'm with um. Don, maybe we've got so many things in the works, and not that it, you know, we always think things are going to slow down or settle down, but I don't know. Um, does it make sense to say to them if they'll keep us for a year? One more year so that they have that. Stability process, not just wait until. And then we are busy kind of getting some feelers out to what potential options are around. For such a position in the future with that, I mean, I'm I'm just thinking out loud, that is not leaning that way hard.
Well, and I I think if we just commit to them for a year, that that takes care of the immediate problem on the thing, and then we can. Use that year to make that determination of of the, well, you know, whether or not it's more feasible to bring it in house.
What do you think, Ricky?
I don't know, you know, there's been some. Changes that could ride that. Job a little differently.
Yeah, because there's, I mean, unfortunately for DHS, our world is not going to go calm after everything comes, it's going to explode.
Yeah, I mean, it it that I think just, yeah. I think you're very tumultuous right now, depending on what funding looks like and all that kind of stuff, so I don't know. I almost feel like it would be better not to upset the apple cart at this moment. But again, that's commissioner call, I mean.
I I I'm leaning that way. But I I don't, I really don't want to upset the, if it if it's working with everything we got going on right now, let's say stay with it.
Jennifer? Come clean, what are you thinking?
I would, I mean, I would like to see it locally done, but the reality of. What Carmen has on her plate with both sides of her departments. She's got a lot going on eligibility, way more going on in eligibility than in child welfare. Um but I know that might change here per soon um. Because that that face to face contact is something that that it makes a difference. Um it truly does, especially sometimes being put in that situation. People don't truly understand what's going on, what it means, because it's a lot of legal stuff. And so you have a lot of people that just don't understand the legal world. And so having that person face to face, but I like your idea of. Let's stay with Garfield for this next year, but in the meantime. When you have time, Carmen, because you have so much time that. And I'm being facetious because I know you don't have any. You and Vicky are the non sleepers um. Is, you know. I'm trying to think, coming up with a game plan of what that could look like and or. Is there anybody locally that might be of interest to it? I mean, I don't know, I don't know what that would look like. Is there an intern? Could we start an intern program or something?
But, yeah, and I can talk to Sharon because I know they do that in Garfield County to see what that looks like.
Our contract is from June to July. So the reason we're deciding this right now is because of the budget this year, right?
Our county budget.
Our county budget, so why don't we put the amount of money in there for a person? And then see if we can get somebody hired or do whatever you want to do and see how it works out it, and so we actually. If we just budget the money, we can we can go another quarter and and see how this works out. Are you following me? Is that not feasible?
You would have to add an F T E.
Yeah.
To your budget.
Just move stuff from one.
No, typically not, I mean, I would defer to Laura and and Carmen and Dawn on that, but my. Understanding is you're going to have to budget for an F T E, if it's a full time F T E, then you have to budget for insurance. You know, all those kinds of things, because if you do decide to do it before twelve thirty one, you have to. You know, you're not going to know whether that person's going to be family plus one, family. Plus or employee plus family, that kind of thing, so you have to always budget at the higher level, now you may not extend that if you don't hire until. May, June, July, but you budget the whole year for it.
So. We are talking about doing this in the budget, but technically we're talking about a year and a half, a year and and. About eight months, seven, eight months.
So I'm not following that.
I'm not either, I.
Because our contract with him is June to July.
So.
So if we if we put it in the budget this year, we're talking about starting next June for another year.
Of twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six, which takes us into twenty. July of twenty twenty seven, so we're talking.
Well, the proposed budget and Laura just texted me is proposed budget already has thirty hours uh of of in it for this position.
So so help me understand, a little bit off track probably, but help me understand why we have to budget for a full year of that position if we know we're not going to hire them until June or July. Because you budget one time a year, right, but you only can pay.
Well, you 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 can budget however much you think's going to be expended in that in that uh for that position or that line item, so. Yeah, you don't have to budget, uh if you think it's going to be a total of, let's say eighty six thousand dollars, including benefits and everything for the position. You only have to budget whatever percentage you think it is.
You're going to be six months.
But Garfield, my understanding was Garfield wants to either do it a year or not.
Well, uh, yeah.
Up until the end of their contract, which ends in July, correct?
Correct.
But but we need to let them know.
Right, we just need to let them know whether we're thinking through the middle of the year or. Or not, by the first of the year, we're going to switch is what I heard, but maybe I heard wrong.
Yeah, we let them know when, I think they'd work with us to win. I think it, you know, some point they don't want to be in limbo, especially if they're having a hard time filling the positions. That they've got outstanding too, and that's one of the things they're worried about is even in Garfield County filling.
Right, they're short, and it's only going to get worse there too.
Well, and they're they've got a hiring freeze as well, so that's another issue that they have is convincing their commissioners that.
But it's it's not my world, so I'm I'm just going to refer to however you the department wants to handle, because it's not going to affect the budget terribly either way.
What qualifications do they have to have, Carmen? Um, let me see, I have that, let me find it real quick. Do they have to have a degree?
No, they don't have to have a degree, they 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 uh then I have to be proficient in in. Uh you know, basic uh uh accounting skills, you know, I'm not I'm not talking accounting per level, but you know, yeah, but keeping type of stuff. They have to be proficient in in, you know, people skills, because they're going to be working with. With people that are going to be upset at them half the time. Um, you know, that that type of stuff, yeah, they've got to have, and they got to be sharp, I mean, that's one thing is they got to be somebody that. Really picks up and, you know, some people pick up on things well and they they can they can deal with those those type of things and other people can't. Even even very intelligent people have a hard time putting it all together sometimes in a job like this.
Well, and Christie just mentioned that it could be someone, I mean, depending on if you want to make that position. Partially remote where they have to come and meet with clients here, but maybe they live somewhere else, I mean, that's a, but then again, it kind of gets away from the. The job to Rio Blanco.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they looking at the child um support manager even position, it's just a high, it is a high school diploma. Is what I I'm looking off of Garfield because I had them send me their most current information because they know things have changed. So theirs is also a um high school diploma.
It's more more of the.
Midyear of experience.
Carmen, do you feel like there's any danger that rape that uh Garfield County by? Say July of this next year of twenty twenty six, they could say, you know what, we really just can't renew the contract, you're on your own?
I.
They indicated that they would, so.
They think they would.
Yeah, they've been pretty supportive, they've been awesome.
Yeah, I've had a good relationship with them since I then I tell you, I've taken it over.
But from what I'm hearing, we already have it budgeted within the deal, within the current budget. So. And I do, I don't disagree, I would like to have it in the county if possible. I don't think we have to change anything, we don't have to approve anything today. What I'm hearing is we just need to be keeping our feelers out to see if there's anybody here locally. That would be interested in taking the job on mid-year. Because we have to let Garfield know. In uh, you know, before July, June, but that we need, you know, whether we do or not.
Yeah, we just.
Is that right?
Yeah, we need to call them if we're like, hey, no, we want to stay for Gar Garfield just to see what's happening to the end of the state fiscal year. Um or if we want to do a position. So just so we can give them that respect and say, no, we're going to go ahead and stay with you until, you know, this end of this fiscal year. Just to kind of let them know what's happening.
Well, and I need to know because of their their uh personnel budgeting issues too, do they? You know, whether they need to be, if we go back to fully staffed if they can. Um or if they can maybe go with. A a part if, yeah, because I'm sure they don't use a full F T E on us, I wouldn't think that would be.
So you're suggesting that we try for a little while and if we can fill it, go for it, if not, we don't, just stay with Garfield, is that is that what you're saying?
Maybe, but what I, I guess the way that I was looking at it is we stay with Garfield, we're staying with Garfield. Um at least till the middle of the year, because that's the end of this fiscal year, state fiscal year. Now, if they need a longer term commitment than that, I would be okay with that too, because I mean, I get it, their staffing piece. But we just start the conversation, I mean, there's no job opening, but are there people that we know of? That might fit that bill down the road. But but that I'm, again, this is not my world, so I'm just thinking at it from a financial position, so. You guys. I'm not Doug, I'll step back with that thought.
Doug, did you want to say something? Sorry, I didn't.
No, I I uh was just trying to make it. Uh if we were going to approve that, we need to just approve a position, but that isn't what she was asking, so I was just clarifying.
So did, do we want, okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. So that you guys want to stay with Garfield until the end of the fiscal year, but put feelers out there until then? Just to see if we have somebody that may or may not, I mean, that may be able to do this position?
That's the way I heard.
That was my thoughts, but Jennifer's not saying anything, I want to know what Jennifer's thinking.
Well, one, I, if if we do go to a vote, I I have to abstain, so I'm being careful. So, fine, personally, yeah, um, so. Because our hiring freeze ends at the beginning of the year, correct?
Right.
So, so if she explores, like you're saying. It until the beginning of the year, and let's say you do find somebody that's interested in it. Or we have multiple people interested in it, then then it's opened and she can fill that position and it's budgeted.
Yes, the only concern I have, that's not taking Garfield into account what we're, we've got to commit one way or the other to.
Oh, I said, yeah, we still need to commit to them, I mean, the work's got to get done.
Yeah, exactly, and that's something, I mean, if you guys want to. Because I think Sharon knows the hardship of even trying to find somebody, you know, so if we do in January, just. Like do a, I don't know, a soft advertisement just to see if we get any calls. I don't know.
So, okay, so let's think outside of people. Let's think outside the box for a minute, we're not that far from Garfield County. And so if we could find somebody that was a good fit. And but somebody needed a full time job instead of thirty hours. And they're needing help, we could say we could share, you know, would you are, would you be interested in the other part of the time for this person?
Well, they've been doing it for us remotely for at least the last seven, eight years.
Well, and or could they, let's say we did find somebody. Who and and we hired somebody. Couldn't we just have them start training that person every time they worked a case? They work, they trained this person, whoever we hire, and that way that caseload gradually gets moved over to that person. And we're still staying with them till July because or June because they're going to have to train this person.
I understood they weren't interested in that.
But if they're working the case anyway because they're staying with us till June. So could you talk to Sharon about, I mean, I.
Understand.
Saying stuff.
You see, I I thought about that a minute ago, but they they told me that. The person that you're hiring is not going to get your reimbursement from the state, you're only going to get reimbursement for one of those people, not two of them. That's going to cost you a lot more money.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Mm hmm. That's why I, I think they would, and I think that would be county only dollars.
Yes, and so you're you're talking a lot of money there.
Yeah, you're talking a about six months of a of a of a half time employee.
It would be, you know, logically, it would be better just to hire somebody and send them somewhere to get trained for a couple.
Another county.
And get it done.
So what are you thinking, Carmen? Uh, there's a lot. Because I know that right now, yes, you know, I know there's a lot going on right now, and it is difficult, especially with Garfield County. Not being able to train, but I do like the idea like like Kelly, you know, you guys said, that putting feelers out there. Also, because we won't know if people are interested if we can't advertise it either. Do you know what I mean? I mean, there's no way, yeah, we can say, oh, you're good at it and. Um, maybe we would find somebody, but if we can do like a soft advertisement and tell Garfield County. You know, we want to stay with you, but we will be advertising because they know the difficulty in that, but after the freeze. You know, of course, after the holidays and stuff like that, maybe putting it out there, but that's just my thought, just to see if we even get any bites.
So.
We can see.
If I understand you and Kelly, Carmen and Kelly, if we we. Uh we we really don't have to tell Garfield anything until December, right? All we're worried about is our budget, and we already have it in the budget. So if we if we come up with somebody between now and December, then we. Let Garfield know we're not going to do it, if we don't, we let Garfield know we're going to do it and we. It might think.
Well, except for the fact Garfield asked us to specifically let them know what our cap was, so they can prepare, they can, you know, what.
So they can do their budget.
Their budget, staffing and everything else.
Yeah, and that's something we can tell Sharon is that we do, you know, plan on staying with them, but we will do a, you know, at least a. Advertisement to see if we get any bites on that.
Muddy the water is just curious, um, why don't we do that? Let's just muddy it a little more, so uh again, Christie thought of, you know, have we looked at any other counties that would be willing to take it on, is that even an option?
So, uh, again, Christie thought of, you know, have we looked at any other counties that would be willing to take it on? Is that even an option? I mean, it's, you know.
I don't think so, because Garfield County has been amazing. The only reason we're bringing it back is just because of the cost and having that face to face. I think is my thoughts.
And and the relationship we we have with.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Garfield County has been doing an exceptional job.
Because they have the experience and been doing it for some.
Correct.
Yeah, if we went to somewhere else, I don't know what kind of. Spots we would get, and further away from here, the less probably.
Yeah, we've we've done shared agreements and it has not worked out as well as this. Agreement.
So. I might back up to my first. Thought again. We get started talking about all these things and options, and then we forget what the realities are. We have a lot going on. What if we just leave it like it is? And revisit it. Next fall, next budget.
I am great with that.
Because we we forget what all we got going on when we get going on down this path.
Well, and that would be my suggestion, you know, given everything that's going on right now.
That's where I'm.
So Carmen, sorry, I I flipped on you there just because I was. Um, I got going on a path and it's like, oh, wait a minute, there's all this other stuff going on, so. I'm good. Okay. If you are, Carmen.
What's I'm sorry.
So just see if we can catch you up. So I'm thinking we just leave it where it's at right now. We just leave it alone, stay with Garfield. And we have this conversation again. Maybe a little earlier next year to see where we're at.
Like in the end of our state fiscal year or? Because then we'll have to sign the contract again, remember?
Yeah.
Because ours ends in. July, I mean, end of June, and it starts a new fiscal year in July.
Okay, I think that makes good sense then. How however soon we need to have the conversation. In order to. Know by the end of June next year, so whether it's April, May, whatever.
I would say start that conversation March. Carmen, in your, one of your Board of Social Services, just to bring it back to to our attention again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to.
See, I can complicate things.
Well, that department is complicated is why.
Yeah.
Um.
I'll lay on that.
Line item N.
Madam Chairman, I move. To withdraw you. I move to approve a letter withdrawing Rio Blanco County. From the Northwest Colorado Development Council, N W C B C.
And I second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, did you want to talk a little bit about this? I mean, I know you've talked about it before.
Yeah. I guess, and I appreciated the letter that Don drafted. I thought you did a nice job with that. I think. Um. Budget wise. We need to find where we can cut. This was an eight thousand dollar membership. And I think we have so much going on. I cannot justify. The time and this being a priority for us, so. Um, I think it's just not. We need to take care of the other bigger things right now, so it's just not a priority. Or be and and don't get me wrong, economic development is huge. Don't get me wrong. We just can't focus on that piece right now as a county.
I think as well as is our budget constraints. I mean, I know that that was one of our decisions and we cut other. Other dues, other, we were cutting money in that sense too, so this was. One that I know I've appreciated you putting your attention to it, Kelly, and. And being available as much as you could. I know that you've been busy and. Still trying to make that work as much as possible because they they do have a. Lot of meetings. I know that I looked at their schedule when we were trying to decide who was going to be on there, and. It was always when I had other meetings with CCI, so. I I was like, there's no way. And I know you're busy with AGNC, so between the three of us, we've got a lot going on. Um, but I do appreciate the work that they do. It's just doesn't fit with Rio Blanco at this time. All right, will you please call the roll?
Oh, Helen.
Hi.
Stretchville.
Hi.
Overton.
All right.
Motion passes. Moving on to line item O.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the letter of support for the Town of Rangelay's grant application to the Colorado River District Community Fund Partnership. And DOLA, asking for emergency funds for their. Turbidity meter.
Turbidity.
What that.
It's turbidity.
Turbidity. There's a meter on there.
What is a turbidity meter?
There you go.
They get it measured with turbidity.
It's the turbidity is.
Oh, oh, uh, 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 we got to have a second, another discussion.
But I seconded it.
Thank you. Now we have it open for discussion.
Turbidity is the. Solid particles in water. And you measure.
Oh, okay.
Doug, if you want any background on that.
You what?
If you guys need any further background on that, I'm here to.
Okay. I I used to help them run the. The uh plant at Colorado, so I I know a little bit about that.
So in other words, you got some dirty water?
Yeah, and the um. Kenny Reservoir, they got their turbine going and man, we really got dirty water.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so we actually did shut the plant down um. Today because it's filthy, filthy, so. That meter will go at our river intake, and so it'll just help Michael and them monitor it when we have really high levels of that. We can only do it, you know, for extended length of time. It can't be days, but. We could do it for a number of hours, so that will be very useful to them when we have. Flash flooding or just runoff, everything that creates that real high turbidity like um. Doug was talking about.
Um, I have a question that I. Wondered about. Well, why can't you pull water out of the reservoir for the Town of Rangelay?
Because then we'd have to pump it to the water plant. And we've already got an existing line that goes, you know, just down there past the airport, and that's where we pull in all our water.
But that's up upstream from your plant, is that correct?
Yes, it is, but we don't have zillions of dollars to build a pipeline to Kenny Reservoir.
But what if you look, but seriously, what if you look, I mean. Under your current situation. I don't see this getting better for you for a long period of time, so is that?
It's not true.
Say that again, Lisa.
Kenny is filthy too. I mean. I don't, I mean, there's probably some relief there, but we don't have the money to. Build another pipeline to our water plant from Kenny Reservoir or even a ditch for that matter. Right now.
I guess, Lisa, what I mean, yeah. Uh. I didn't say you had the money. I would suggest you start looking for grants, but.
Well, we are on at Kelly, I mean.
Hey.
But we've got so many other things, just even about the plant. Trying to treat the water that take in our. You know. Presaid ponds. I mean, we've got so many other things that right now take higher priorities than trying to re. Direct where we get water from.
Lisa, I'm sorry I got off on that. I I just have always wondered that, but I didn't really mean to. Steer the conversation that direction.
They did have that in their original plan to have a ditch that came down from Kenny. Towards Rangelay, and it just never came to fruition.
So I do um. Approve or I really like this letter of support. I hope that it works and we can get something figured out there because. That I don't see that. I I'm watching what's running off of that. That Burns car. Into the river down past my house and then all over the place, and it it's not going to get any better. Every time it rains, we're gonna, it's gonna.
Oh, no, everything, we're not from snow eventually, everything, so. I mean, we know this is long term, and I did talk with like the representatives offline after we had our AGNC meeting and obviously since the government shutdown, they can't really act on anything, but. We really want to encourage. I know you guys are working on that as well to get a president to declare, you know. The sudden emergency area, but I mean, we have so many increased costs from that. It's it's pretty overwhelming how we're going to. Fund those things, so.
Anything else?
No.
Will you please call the roll?
Richfield.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Oh, Helen.
Hi.
Thank you, Lisa.
I appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, the motion passes. Moving on to line item P.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion. For ratification of the EWP application final draft. First preliminary approved. On October fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
I have a conversation before I second it. The may dial back of second.
Okay.
The reason I say that is um. This isn't just the application. This is the actual contract, isn't it, that we're signing?
I thought it would still be a group, well.
Is it in the thing? I didn't see it in, I'll look.
You know, whatever.
And yeah, you did give me the documentation. Oh, no, you did give me the documentation. Um, let's see, let's see. So the last thing I saw from him was that. That scope of work.
There it is.
The scope of work was just for your review. It'll be in the actual agreement documents once it's once it's built. But I thought his initial. What he sent back to. Hasn't he sent, I thought what I saw he had sent back from your application. But am I backwards?
Um, so the documents that we presented in on Wednesday is the same documentation.
That's what you're trying to approve.
Yes, because we needed. So I don't think I've actually got an agreement, at least not with anything other than.
Something bad.
Yeah, let's let's look and see, because it would have went to both you and I. And I don't think so. E W.
That was October twenty four.
So. Okay, he says in his email. That. National has approved the project. Attached to the documents ready for signature. The budget on the SF four two four reflects seventy five percent rate of the seven hundred fifty thousand included for technical assistance and funding. National has approved the project funding. I am submitting a waiver for the agreement to extend it to ten fifteen twenty six. Um. That document.
And I can't open those documents for whatever reason on this.
Uh, you down, try and download it instead of opening it. It may not let you do it even then.
Haven't had luck. Fortunately.
Um.
Oh, it did this time. Good job.
Yeah.
Maybe it is just the applicant, because he sent that. So you sent him the application. And then. He sent it back to you for signature?
Yes, because he had to fill in the budget, all that budget information, remember the?
Okay.
And that we attached the scope of work. And so the document that really that had the changes was the application for federal assistance SF four two four.
Okay. All right.
So I'm assuming we'll get grant documents that are much more detailed.
Yeah, this.
So this will include uh the anti lobbying. Um.
Yeah, okay.
The.
I'm sorry, I I have misread that email. I thought he, this was the actual contract, so my apologies. Okay. So after that discussion, I will second it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion?
Any for discussion on this? My only discussion.
There you go.
Sorry, jump right in. My only discussion would be, um, so. Based on this information and how quickly Clinton can get back to us, I would assume there's going to be a grant. That we'll have to execute, and my guess it'll probably be electronic, like any other federal grants that we get. Um, so there could be a special meeting, maybe in your future. In order to execute that um on a timely basis in order to get that rolling, because again, we're continuing to do. Um, your road bridge crews continue to continuing to do work that could be funded under this, so.
So moving forward, because they're emailing them to me, I every time I'm going to check with you and make sure I can sign before I sign, like I did this.
Yes, okay, let's sign. I think that would be perfect, yeah, because they're not sending those sometimes to the VOCC E S I, they want to.
Yeah, they're sending them to, or the one I did, and that's why I wanted to double check, because I know that there's some moving parts to them.
Yeah, there is. Okay, and so the fact that he's got the approval out of DC, he's got the money. So I think as soon as he gets this application, he will turn that around very quickly, so I'm hoping. That we get that contract ASAP so that we can get started getting these guys paid for what they're doing.
So the the one that I signed today. Does that impact that?
I don't know what you signed.
The one you signed today, I think, was just this.
Okay.
Was this was this application for.
Okay.
The electronic version of this.
Okay. All right, will you please call the roll?
Can I phone a friend?
Yes. Please do. Just kidding.
Overton.
Hi.
Oh, Helen.
Hi.
Stretchville.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Le- moving on to line item Q.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve a contract with elevated excavating. Regarding. Um, subgrading and dirt work. For the Meeker Airport Fuel Farm. Subject to legal review.
The amount was fifty thousand, I think, is what Eric said.
I think roughly.
Fifty five.
Was right there.
So.
Yeah, in the amount of. Approximately fifty five thousand. Is that okay to say that?
Yeah, I think so.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. So we actually had this discussion earlier. This morning with Eric to get this project. Moving. Uh, will you please call the roll?
Oh, Helen.
Hi.
Stretchville.
Hi.
Overton.
All right.
Alrighty, we will reset as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Bor- Board of Social Services. So Carmen, you are back on.
Or not.
You're you're muted, Carmen.
Sorry.
There you go. We can hear you.
So I sent you guys, I hope you all got it, um, the budget.
Yes.
Let me hear, let me get in here.
Carmen, did you happen to send that to me as well?
I did not. Is that Vicky?
Yes.
No, I have not. Let me get back in there. I have so many tabs open. I am so sorry. My email.
Actually, we could forward it so you don't have to, Carmen.
Okay.
Let me do that.
Yeah, I have it up now. Sorry, I've been just, yeah, if you want to, that's fine.
I will send that. To your administrator, Wendy. Don, you need it too?
Yes, please, if you would. You didn't send it to me, did you, Carmen?
I did not, because I I just got it, so I just sent it to.
On its way.
So, um, first of all, I thought maybe before we got into that, if you guys wanted, you know, the SNAP stuff and what's going on. And a little bit about um how much went out in SNAP dollars. Last month, we don't have an exact, exact amount because they're still doing, of course, the final step for September. But right now, um, Lisa was able to get me the number of ninety thousand, six hundred eighty six dollars. Um, so that's the SNAP dollars and um amount that's going to affect our households. In Rio Blanco County. Um, that's not the exact number, so that may change a little bit once they do that final. Count. Um, I did get an email from Tim. Um, about, you know, if we needed any assistance with that, because he's, their foundation is helping Moffett County. Um, I asked him about it and they said that they. Um, I asked him about it, and they said that they would have to raise funds or possibly use it from the fire. And we said, I said, no, we don't want to take from the fire. Um, so he and I will probably talk a little bit more about it once I get him the number. Um, but I felt that the money needed to go more to our food banks and our pantries to help assist families. Um, if they were able to help, but that's still a conversation I'm having with Tim. Um, I'll stop for a minute if you guys have any questions.
So on the, on the food assistance, you said that was an overage of ninety thousand, or that the ninety thousand is, is what's gonna impact that families are not going to receive?
Families are not going to receive that. And that's just, and like I said, they're still working on the, you know, month end stuff, so that's not the full picture, that may change a little bit.
Okay, so just so that. Okay, so looking at the financial thing that you've sent us, where am I looking for that information?
That one won't be on there, this one is a little bit separate. I wanted to let, give you guys, sorry, you're probably over there.
I like looking here.
Okay. Wanted to give you an update, since SNAP right now is such a hot topic and everything that's happening right now with SNAP and our families not receiving their SNAP allocation for November due to the government shutdown and the impact it'll have in Rio Blanco families. Because if you think about that, that's quite a bit of money, you know, for our families to not go, you know, they will be without. Um, so I kind of just wanted to kind of give you update on that.
Um, what is, what, excuse me, what is the, uh, what kind of percentage is that? For what we do for SNAP in the county?
SNAP is fully funded through, isn't it?
Yes, currently it is, yes.
What's this, the ninety we're short?
We're not.
Sure.
We're, we're not short, it's just not gonna get paid to the families that normally get it.
Because of the government.
Because of the shutdown, so all of the November payments, SNAP payments within Rio Blanco County total up about ninety thousand dollars, they go directly to.
So that's a hundred percent where they're not gonna get.
They're not gonna get it.
They're not getting any of their SNAP benefits. So what I have been doing is talking to our pantries. Um, we met with Lisa Moffett, and you'll have to correct me if, and, um, Tammy Doris, Tammy Doris does the pantry in Rangeley, and Lisa Moffett is the one that handles it in, um, Meeker, just to see where they're at, if we can offer any support. Um, and so, yeah, we just kind of have been in conversation. We connected Lisa Moffett with Tammy Doris, because Tammy Doris, if anybody knows Tammy has been doing it for years, has a lot of resources and, you know, things that Lisa can kind of reach out to for locally.
So the number of people in Rio Blanco County that are on, that rely on SNAP, did I understand correctly, it'd be in about a thousand?
Um, right now, we have recipients, we know are five hundred and sixty nine, that's recipients only.
What does that mean? What does recipients mean versus?
Household.
Yeah.
Household.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't know the number of people?
No.
You, you could just think about it, if you'd even double that, you know what I mean?
Perhaps, yeah.
You know, if you figure average family, a family of four, that would be four for each household.
That's two thousand.
So, I mean, we have quite a, it's gonna impact our families pretty significantly.
And our lower income families, the, so it's not like it's affecting the people that's got jobs and income and stuff like that, it's gonna be people that rely on this.
Well, and it could be people that have jobs, it's just the lower.
I mean, I mean, I mean, people within the lower, uh, uh, economics.
Economics, which is.
Well, think about that, that's, that's a third of our.
A third of our camp.
That's a third of our population.
Uh, Carmen, the classification to, in order to qualify for SNAP is like a hundred and thirty eight percent or something like that of poverty, poverty level, is that right? And what is that dollar amount? Seems like less than twenty seven thousand a year or something like that?
Yeah, and I could pull that up, so I can, um, give you that for sure.
I think it's, I thought I saw that that's about a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand twenty seven.
And it depends, there's a lot of things, it's not just about how much you make, also, there's a lot of different exceptions too. So we don't want people to think, oh, I make this much money and I automatically, you know, get it. Um, one second, I'm pulling that up so I can share it with you guys on this.
It's based on household income too, isn't it, Carmen, not just individual income?
Correct, it's on the, on the whole household in, in, oh my gosh, whole households income, so I'm trying to type in pocket at the same time, so I can kind of show you that. Um.
Are you gonna share your screen, Carmen?
Yeah, I'm just trying to pull it up so you guys can see it.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was kind of one of those things, is that not everybody on this program is not working.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's.
Correct, we have, yeah, we have people that are working and also going to school, um, as well, there's certain, you know. Okay, here we go, let me.
And income levels with, 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 with kids, brings them up to the level that they need to.
Trying to share.
Anything that keeps the household income low enough that they qualify?
So right, can you all see it?
Yes, yes, we can, but we might need to expand it now.
Okay, let me see.
Oh, perfect.
There you go. Okay, is that better?
No, it didn't do anything. I thought it could go from the hundred percent and increase it.
Oh, I could do that. Oh, she doing that?
There you go.
Good, we did.
I think maybe we'll see without my glasses now.
Yeah, so right here, we have the household of one, and this is as, this is the most recent one, is October, um, first. And it's gross income, so they can work and receive, um, SNAP benefits if they fall within that criteria. And so it goes all the way to eight, so it kind of gives you a picture of what that is, and then, um, these are just the different allotment sizes that people get, so a household of one would automatically get two ninety eight, twenty four dollars to two ninety eight, just depending on what type of ha, household you have. And then, um, we, they do get deductions, um, which is two oh nine, so, um, and a maximum deduction of seven forty four, so it's, it's not just based on your income.
So, so deductions not meaning deducting from the amount you get? I take it?
Correct, it deducts from, the, what the, um, what the computer system does is it actually puts it into the formula, and then it'll take from the top of the gross income, and depending on what deductions you have, like HCUA is a common one for heating and cooling, so that will come off that, the income.
So that's a monthly thing, so, like, say you're, and it, give me a, for instance, like, uh, single individual, which is, uh, so, single household, uh, the dollar amounts there, two thousand one fifty two for a hundred and sixty five percent.
Yeah, ours is, yeah, and ours is, um, the one hundred and thirty percent FPL.
One thirty percent, what does FPL stand for?
Federal Poverty Level.
Federal Poverty Level, so one, six, nine, six, and then you're gonna subtract whatever the utilities cost is, right?
Not necessarily.
Okay, it's always, it's all high.
A deduction they have, so if they have a heating and cooling, like, a good example is like last year, if they got leap last year, and they mark, yes, I got leap in my home, then they could get up to the five ninety four deduction.
So they, when you say deduction, you're meaning they get that much more money, or that amount, that five hundred ninety four comes off of the sixteen ninety six?
Cr, off whatever their income is, so say they made, let's just go up here. So let's say they made a thousand, or one thousand, six hundred dollars. And so the system will see that, that, um, gross amount, and then down below, it'll see, see a deduction, like, oh, they got leap last year. Now, things are changing this year a little bit, this is just an example from last year. Um, so they got a standard deduction of the five, um, ninety four. So it can take that off of that, and then they possibly would, you know, um, qualify for food assistance.
So, just to simplify that, if they, uh, if their F, FPL a hundred and thirty percent was sixteen hundred, they could make twenty one hundred and then subtract the five hundred, and it would bring them down to poverty level, is that what you're saying?
Kind of, yes. It's a kind, it's a really interesting, that's something one day I'll have to show you guys how it works in our system. We'll use an example of one of our, you know, a mock system, so you can kind of see it. Because a lot of people, that's where they get angry, because they'll look at this and say, well, I make a thousand, six hundred dollars, how come I don't qualify? And that's because a lot of other different things go into the eligibility.
So that would be good, but would you send what you've got here, what you, what you've got online, would you send that to us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's easier also, if you see it sometimes, to see how the calculations work within that system, because it's not, everybody thinks it's really black and white, and it really isn't.
So I guess, I'm gonna go back to the fact that if this is real, we've really got a third of our people in our county that's relying on this. Is there anything the county can do, forward thinking to help get people, I don't want the hand out, I want the hand up.
They can act, yeah. They can support their lo, local food banks.
That's not what I'm meaning, at all. What I mean is get people either working or in better jobs or whatever, so they're not having to rely on it or ask anybody for food assistance. What in the world can, I mean, it just blows my mind, there's that many in our county.
That is a great question, Kelly.
Economic development is, you know, one of the things that counties have the ability to to try to do, to, you know, draw businesses and things in and have the better jobs, those type of things, but.
But the reality is, nobody can find help.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the infuriating part to me, people can't find help, and yet we got this many people that are on SNAP.
Yeah, and there's a lot.
How do we help, I mean, there, there's a, there's a piece leak, I know it's a national problem, but what could we do here locally?
Bring back the workforce. Center, so people have a place to go to apply.
Okay. So when, where did that leave? The workforce center, is that a state program?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. They're actually housed.
Yeah, I was wondering if we ever had it.
We did have it.
We have it maker? Yeah, because the gal that, uh, was the head of it, her husband worked for me, and when they quit, they left town, it left Meeker.
How long ago was that?
That was.
Two years, maybe.
Yeah, two, three years.
They had one that, okay, I didn't realize.
Yeah, we did, we, they were actually housed at Town Hall forever, here in Meeker, and then at the college, at, um, in Rangeley.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about now.
Yeah, and so where's the closest one at this point?
Craig.
Big rifle, bondman. Either way.
Yeah, and then also with food assistance, it is a supplemental program, supplemental to what they have, so their income or whatever they happen to have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm anxious to visit with some folks, I know the college is thinking about some ideas. So that's how come I wanted to pick you guys' brains, so at some point, um, Carmen, I may visit with you a little bit more.
Okay, because that can actually help our CWP program now that we can go back out in the community too.
Okay, CWP, what's that one?
Colorado Works Program.
And that comes through your office?
Yeah, we have that program here.
Okay. Hey. So, if I could.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm wondering, Carmen, the ask here, or what, I guess, direction or information here is, do we have just a short term problem, do we have a two month problem, a three month problem?
That's a good question, so basically, right now, with the government shutdown, our food assistance, the allocations usually go out at the end of the month for the next month. So right now, November, um, we know that nobody is going to get their food assistance. And hypothetically, if something was to happen and the government was to open, that still would affect our recipients of SNAP. Because they can't just hurry and get it out to everybody. So there's also that lag, and it just all depends on how long the, um, government shutdown lasts, and we also know that the impact of that can prolong a month or two, you know, for people to get restabilized as well.
In other words, please talk to your senators.
There you go, yes, please.
Tell them about paying.
So. So, it. I don't know where this, so, is it like the federal employees that once they do reopen, let's say they reopen on the fifteenth of November, will they come back and pay them for the month of November, or are they just out for the month of November and they would probably come back in and pay for December? Do you have any idea?
I don't have any idea, because they haven't given us really any guidance on that. And I don't want to, um, you know, speak out of turn, you know what I mean, to what they are going to do, but in the past, they have given them back, retroed back their benefits, so say it's on the fifteenth or even at the end of November, um, and now Decembers are going out, they may be able to give, they will, you know, they have given them their November benefits, but I don't know what it's going to do this time.
Trying to second guess this guy.
Yeah.
Well, and the challenge, I think, too, is, so, let's say I'm a, a single individual and I've been depending on SNAP. And for whatever percentage of my salary that that is, and then I say, okay, well, I'm not getting that, so I'm gonna go to the food bank. So I go to the food bank, and I, and I take those resources there, because I'm not getting it somewhere else. And then the next month, I get twice as much, because, but the food bank doesn't get that.
Right.
So I think there's a big, you know, and maybe it's the difference between charitable organizations, um, you know, we know the food bank in Meeker, because of the fire, did not have their Mountain Valley Bank food drive, which was a huge food drive for them. So their pantry is very limited right now, they're gonna work with Rangeley to try and get some purchasing and, and rally donations and that kind of thing, but, you know, it's, I think, to me, I see a very immediate, short term need where they're gonna get hit hard
Mm-hmm.
this month, and pretty soon the well might run dry, but again, I, whether that's, you know, that, that's just from my own personal standpoint. Having worked at the food bank a couple times. And the, at the food banks, at least both in Meeker and Rangeley, they don't ask for qualification. If there is, uh, they just basically make sure they have a name and an address to try and confirm that the people are within Rio Blanco, but it is a charitable, it's not a governmental agency, it is not a, it's a charitable organization, just like you could probably go into the soup kitchen in Grand Junction and get food, that's on, you know, to.
is a charitable organization, just like you could probably go into the soup kitchen in Grand Junction and get food. That's on, you know, to, you know, typically those charitable organizations are not gonna try to qualify you before they serve you. They're gonna let, they're gonna trust you to serve, you know? If you feel like there's a need, there's a need.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Carmen? Would you?
Yes, yes.
On that note, I do want to bring up one thing that happened at CCI. The conversation that was had over SNAP because they were trying to implement or they were introducing a bill about sugary foods, sugary drinks, um, the non-nutritional um that is bought by SNAP funding. And so they were trying to introduce in the state of Colorado, these items would no longer be allowed to be purchased and on a good note to our governor, he actually, before we could even vote on this legislation, if we were gonna introduce it, already did that. So he, he put in a waiver that to the federal government saying, we will stop selling these items to SNAP recipients.
And let him have. Well, that, good for him.
Yeah.
I know the grocery store is gonna be.
Well, but the bottom, but the bottom line is they're still gonna buy stuff. It just might happen.
I know, it's just, it's just policing at the, at the cash register. You can't buy that.
Yeah, no, and I get that, but somebody, somebody's gonna have to start policing because nobody's policing. And there's a lot of misuse of it.
Well, and I think that that's, we've got to get back to the old policies of why SNAP was even introduced. And it was to help our farmers and ag. And we've got to get back to that nutritional value. We just, we do.
Only for the health of our people.
Mm-hmm. I would agree.
Well, going back to the food bank, most of their donations, a lot of that stuff is not gonna be the healthy stuff because it's non, it's not the perishables because they need it to sit on the shelf.
Hmm.
And a lot of the over thing, the things they get from the grocery stores from, uh, you know, the, the, you know, Dollar General or the um uh Watts, Clark's are gonna be the things that are to have that limited shelf life. You know, there's a, you know, potato chips that are going out and they expire. Well, they're not able to sell those things after that stale date. But the food pantry can say, look, it's expired, but if you want it, you can eat it. Uh, actually, we heard an interesting story that one of the stores won't allow their stale-dated items to be given away. They'll put them like in the dumpster and if you want to dive in the dumpster, they'll let you get them out. Which is really sad because that's just their corporate policy. Um. Yeah, I mean, because someone gets something that's maybe stale-dated, but anyways, it's kind of one of those things where they'll take donations, I know we'll take donations from about anywhere, you know, and if it's still dated, they just say, you know, you're welcome to have it, but understand that that is still dated and it's, you know.
Hmm.
We're not gonna solve it today.
No.
Well, I think just about. I don't know what I'd do, but I'm sure it wouldn't be politically correct.
Thank you, Carmen. Is there anything else that you wanted to update us on?
Um, not currently because we are in, you know, the federal shutdown, so there's still things coming down that we don't, we're not aware of quite yet. Um, but if you guys want to look over the budget stuff and if you have any questions, just reach out.
So Carmen, is that is close to a final twenty twenty-six budget as you can get? I haven't looked at it yet, but, or is that, you think there's gonna be some changes?
There's gonna be, there's probably gonna be some changes. What I sent to you all is just basically um what Lisa has given me as where we're at year-to-date to what we have currently.
Okay.
Did I get any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Carmen, for what you do. I can't imagine.
Oh, thank you.
Things you have.
Thank you. So we will adjourn as Board of Social Services and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, so we're moving on to resolutions and we have one resolution, line item A.
Me or you?
Uh, you.
Are you sure? All right. Um, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Rio Blanco County, Colorado, avoiding a check. Remind you of that number, I can't remember it.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, do you guys?
I'm looking for the. Uh, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, excuse me, I just looked, see, I'm picking it. This is to the Colorado State Treasury, Colorado Department of Labor. Uh, they posted the check that they had received it and then returned the, returned a check to Carol. And so we're avoiding that because their records are saying that it's been paid, so we didn't need to submit this check. But we are kind of holding that, our breath that maybe that could come back and they'll say, wait a minute, we didn't get that check, so this resolution will cancel that.
Anything else? No. We please call the roll.
Oh, Helen.
Hi.
Scratchville.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Nelson Passons, we do not have any public hearings. Other business, county administrator update, Vicky.
Um, for my update, and I will email Sean after this, I did not get anything prepared. A lot of budget, um, finalization of the EWP documents, um, working on some restructuring plans. And I'm trying to think what else. Uh, really, budget, 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 uh, through the majority of the budget expenditures, there are some still outstanding such as capital expense, final personnel-type things, um. I think that about everything else is in, um, fleet is another one that we need to discuss. And then the budget book, they changed their formatting, so I'm, I'm, have some classwork on that that'll um hopefully lead Lisa and I into finishing up that budget book. The budget hearing was moved from the third of December to the tenth. Well. Hang on, Chrissy's pulling it up. It's the following Monday. The tenth, I think it's the.
That's the number, I don't remember.
And the what?
Uh, that's the November tenth is for the public presentation.
Okay, then the board meeting and everything, the eleven is a holiday.
Yes.
It's Tuesday.
Yes. Um, and that meeting will be at five o'clock. Um, and then.
Did we change it from November twelfth?
That no. What's the memorial, yeah, because that's, the eleventh is Memorial Day.
Yeah, but I had it on the twelve this one.
No, it's gonna be on Monday, yeah.
Monday. Correct.
So it is on Monday, five o'clock, uh, that'll be the public hearing, a public hearing on that uh, to address anyone that can't come during the day to look at that, so I've got my work cut out between now and then to generate the budget book. That doesn't mean that's the final one, there could be some changes still made after that point. Um, especially after you hear public opinion, that could, you know, add or remove line items or things like that, so that's my report.
Good, thank you. Because I have any questions?
I don't.
Yeah.
Um, what do you, when do you sleep? Not very often. Dawn and I can, and Jennifer, I think I've emailed back and forth with you at, you know, one, two o'clock in the morning and I know it's one of those things, I forget to click on the little send this later, send this at seven AM in the morning, so it doesn't look like I'm erotic. But it is slowing down, um, having, you know, I'm hoping that we'll have the Recovery Manager RFP, that comes in on the third, uh, closes the third, uh, we'll open that on the fourth. Would love, love, love if we could get someone that will take over that because that will be a heavy lift um, when we start talking about that federal funding, um, whether it's the EWP program or FEMA, or if we were to get FEMA, we do not have FEMA at this moment. Um, but those things will be a heavy lift for someone and I'm just hopeful that that Recovery Manager will be in place on that. Me too.
All right.
So I thought it was done before, but now I really am.
Now you really are.
Now I really am.
All right, which one of you, go first?
I don't know, I can, so I guess I'm, we just go in this order. Um, so I, uh, see, where am I? That's two, okay, so I was at the uh Yampa Valley, or Yampa Green Roundtable. And I went to several, a couple of recovery meetings. The AQCC Reg thirty-one, I've been, uh, trying to keep track of that, but uh, Vicky has assured me that, uh,
Toby?
Toby, thank you. Toby is on top of that.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe it would be good if Toby could come and tell us what's going on there and what's happening sometime. Sure he is taking care of it, but you guys know what Reg thirty-one is?
Not very.
Uh, landfill emissions. And they're, they've been negotiating with the uh, state to try and get those under control a little bit. Mesa County's been kind of taking the lead on that with everybody else. And uh, they've got quite a few concessions, but it's, it's, it's so silly because they are requiring stuff that has no data and no reason to require it. And, and we're having a real hard time with why the state would do that and why they can do that, it's, but anyway. Um, then I have AGNC meetings. AGNC is having a few problems and so we're working on that a little extra. Uh, I went to the Burke Bridge meeting. Budget meetings. Um, I met with Deidre McNabb again. Um, I, uh, Wolf Coalition, the Wolf Coalition, um, they're trying to, trying to second guess what's gonna happen with the governor because of the Department of uh, Ag, or sent the state of Colorado a letter telling them that they can't get wolves from anywhere except five or six states.
Only a few.
Um, Northwest Colorado or Northwest United States. And it's really thrown a wrench in the, in his works of getting wolves um, in this next round. And so he's trying to work on that and we're trying to second guess what he's trying to do. Um, then, uh, we could check on more.
While you're doing that, Doug, just to add to the, the wolf conversation there, that what they're, if I recall correctly, that letter indicates that it was clear in the ten J rule as to where they could get those wolves. And so they have actually, um, not followed that ten J rule when they got the wolves out of Alaska, right?
Yes, that is, that was their, uh.
So that'll be interesting to see where that lands because if they can, I mean, if they stick to their gun that they have not followed the ten J rule, that's gonna be interesting.
The feds can throw, can put this whole reintroduction thing on hold or, or mess with it quite a bit, so. Um, uh, I also went to the Northwest TPR meeting with Jennifer. And uh, learned quite a bit at that meeting. Um, it was a good day. Special BOCC meeting the next day. Um, I think that's all I, all I've got this time.
There you go. I gotta go, I need to go.
Sure, I will. Don't seem like I have very much, what I've been doing. Um, budget. And trying to understand and learn budget, still, um, so keep bugging Vicky and, and Lisa. Um, the EWP, um, Emergency Watershed Program, trying to help Vicky and NRCS and get all that moving. Um, so let's see, the Recovery Manager, I keep, keep looking out there and trying to find somebody for that. Um, that's still, like you said, the fourth, I guess, is third is when that's due, so anybody. Yeah, anybody interested in that, please apply. Um, attended the Club Twenty caucus. Um, I think there was myself and I just drew a blank on the gentleman's name that was there from CNCC. So the upshot of that is that I'll be the voting member um for Club Twenty and Dr. Jones will be the second one and I think having you as the third one. I can't, I think so, maybe you were. No, I think, I think Dr. Jones, I can't remember how we did that, but that's what happens when you're not there. Okay, wow. Um, let's see, then also had our Natural Resource Committee, um, that oversees Rees. Um, the Conservation Districts go, did go ahead and commit to continuing to pay fifty thousand dollars towards that position. Um, and then I'm gonna just look forward for a minute because, um, that tomorrow evening, the twenty-ninth is the Regional Partnership Initiative that meeting that Carrie will hold here in Rangeley. So can you make that?
I'm heading to Albuquerque tomorrow morning. I know, and I even had it on my schedule.
Okay. Um, dang it, okay. So, um, anyway, that is a Regional Partnership Initiative. Uh, do we have anybody online that would have any interest or here in Rangeley? Do you have any interest in that? We can talk about it later, but anyway, so it's a, um, so it's basically conservation, agriculture and recreation. And so we're doing this at the state, um, trying to put together a plan, what are our priorities in the county? And then we can apply for up to fifth, well, can't apply for the full fifty thou, fifty million, but we'd like to, um. It allows us to apply for, to that pot of money for projects within the county. So I really want to encourage people to engage and participate from our local level.
Got something to me, might be interesting.
I would sure hope so.
All right, and next Thursday.
And I hope, I mean, because it's, it's the, um, I mean, it's the, the side-by-side, the four-wheeler crowd, the, I mean, the rock crawler crowd. All of that stuff needs to play into this. Um, water, fishing, whatever you want to do, hunting, guiding.
So I, all I put on my calendar was Carrie Brennan, Rangeley District Hospital, that's where I needed to be. I didn't know why, I was just going. But so it's, it's actually called what, so that I can.
Regional Partnership Initiative. And I mean, it, it, I, if people want to participate and help.
There's grant money out there and we need to set, set some help to figure out
Where the priorities are.
Priorities, what you want to use it for.
Well, you should have, uh, Wade Rusher. He, uh, had, he's head of the OHV up here.
Yes, he should be, definitely. And anybody you can think of like that.
Please let anybody and everybody know.
Hunters, uh, fishermen, uh.
Guides.
So, uh, the, the side-by-side, that kind of stuff, it's anything that's outdoors that we can promote.
Yes, so please, please, please participate. And what I'm anticipating is we won't do a meeting in.
We won't do a meeting in Meeker and Range, the same meeting in Meeker and Rangeley each time. We did, this time, the first meeting, we are. But after that, when we get this, a group set up that's a little more formalized. I'm hopeful they will rotate back and forth between Rangeley and Meeker, but we, we can't have a meeting here and a meeting there to try to. Um. There, there has to be a commitment to it, is what I'm saying, I guess. So, um, then.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing that I wanna bring to people's attention too is. Saturday, the first. Um, is the information. Um, meeting as well as a potluck. Or, um. Kind of a community gathering, support, appreciate, celebrate. We call it a party in some respects because we've made it through the summer. And I know that there, you know, there's been fundraisers and so forth, which has been awesome. We are not trying to fundraise. We are just trying to. Enjoy the fact that we got through the summer. We've had a good fall and.
I should.
Just to. What we're calling.
And it, and it's also going to be a place to gather information.
Yes. So we, as the county, will talk about what we've been doing. Um, the Conservation District, talk about what they've been doing. Kinda looking like our federal agencies aren't gonna be available, able to come, but. Um, anyway, just kinda, if landowners or homeowners or business owners or just the general public wanna know. What we've been doing and if they are needing help, this is the place to come to have that conversation. We should have somebody there. To answer questions of all kinds.
Hey Kelly, we will have Curtis pitch from the Forest Service at the end.
God, Curtis. Okay. Any commitment from BLM yet?
Not yet. Um, Curtis said he had permission because it was fire-related.
Wow, great.
Maybe, maybe he can peer pressure Bill, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Awesome. Anything else Lynn that I missed on that piece?
Um, no, I don't think so, just that. We got, we still have a lot to do. I, Kelly, need to coordinate with you on messaging and making sure we're. Keeping everybody concise and that they're getting across the points that we want them to, so I think we'll talk some tonight. Um, but I know Sarah's looking for guidance from you on this small business thing. I'm not looked in with this Christopher person at all. So I'm gonna need your help with that, but, um. Also, just to give everybody a heads up, she's not speaking, but Danielle is planning on showing up. And she'll have a table there and probably some resources if anybody has questions for her.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you. So I attended the Northwest TPR with Doug, um. Had a little bit of a controversial conversation. About, um, our priorities in the Northwest TPR, so we, last time. We all agreed on our priorities, but we didn't pass a resolution. Because we usually do that the next time around at the next meeting. And, um. The commission, uh, went ahead and. Approved our priorities without our resolution, and so Doug. And, and I, I got on the mic and said, my disappointment, I'm not the voting member. I said, I'm just disappointed that, that that happened and that should have been the other way around. And so then Doug got on there and voted no. Um, and then soon to follow, we had, um, Moffett County backing us up, which was nice to have.
Which was, it sent a message to the.
C dot.
C dot, because if one more county would have voted no. It wouldn't have been approved. So it was a wire, right type of the wire, and the guy asked me, he said, in the meeting, I said, are you. Uh, voting no because of the plan or because of the. We got ahead of you, and I said, it's because you put the cart before the horse. You can't approve something we haven't done yet. But the state does that to us all the time. And I just thought it was a good way to tell them we're, we're, we're not. We're not just gonna roll over every time you wanna do something.
So, so maybe, did they change your priorities in what they approved, or did they approve what you wanted?
They approved what we wanted.
But that doesn't, next time they might not, is the issue.
Yeah, well, and, and the thing is, is that, you know. We are the body that says this is what Northwest wants. And when you have the commission telling us what our priority, yeah, that's where I got frustrated.
Yeah.
Of, no, that's, this is, and that's why they created the TPRs. Years ago, so that we had our own voices. And so. I was really glad Doug was there to do the work.
It, it begs the question, why are we there?
Exactly.
Good job.
Yes, um, then we had, um, a special BOCC meeting. I attended the CTSI. Sorry, Workman's Board Meeting and. Attended, um, a couple of CCI meetings. As well as a training and tonight I have Western nine-one-one board meeting. And that's, I met with a couple of constituents, text a couple of constituents back and forth. Um, actually had a. Phone call from a constituent who I was told was a Rio Blanco County constituent. It ended up being a Moffett County constituent, but I still got the issue resolved for her, so. She was very happy even though it, I had, I had a lot of phone calls and texts going on over the weekend, trying to figure it out. Had to do with hunting and hunter shooting down into her property and I knew the area, so. I found the right people, so we got it resolved. And that, that was, that's all mine. So we will adjourn our meeting as of three twenty-six. Thanks, everybody.